We have a system that I think sometimes isn't gracious for life's ups and downs. You know, you're sort of a medical emergency away from not being able to pay your rent.
Yeah.
And this idea that it's okay for people to live comfortably. I try not to come in with too focused of a solution before I clearly define the problem and that the problem, you know, with the people that are decision makers in the community. And as long as we ask yes and no questions, it's as if we are working hard and fast to polarize. And if we decide there is no nuance and there is no complexity, then we are feeding into that polarization every time we do that.
Hello, Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip Bogren, and for episode 45, I spoke with Tina Marquess, who is a candidate running for city council. We met at the main branch of the Boulder Public Library and talked about a wide variety of subjects, including her work on the BVSD school board, homelessness, the introvert revolution, middle income housing, her leadership style, and climate change, among others. I admire Tina for her tireless work defending transgender students in our BVSD in Colorado schools, and for her thoughtful and careful approach to decision making. I hope you enjoyed this conversation with Tina Marquess. Tina, welcome to Sharing Boulder. Thank you so much for making time this morning. I wonder if you could just introduce yourself for a couple minutes?
Sure. My name is Tina Marquess, and I'm running for Boulder City Council along with some other great candidates. And my involvement in the community goes back pretty far. I started volunteering at my children's elementary school in our neighborhood probably about 15 years ago. And from there, I served on the District Accountability Committee, which is a committee that's made up of parents from the 56 schools in Boulder. I got to understand some of the different issues across the district, which is 500 square miles. Not everyone realizes how incredibly large our district is. And then I ran for school board. So I ran, served eight years. In the last four years, I served as president, including during the pandemic, which isn't what everyone strives to be. I'm the pandemic president. It was tough.
People got pretty angry at school boards across the country. And so for you to serve during that time, thank you for your service. That must have been not easy.
Yeah. But I think one of the, one of the things that came out of the pandemic was just learning how do you deal with a crisis? And that is what we focused on. A lot of it first was framing the question. And the question for us was, how do we get kids back in school in a way that is safe for kids and safe for teachers? That was our constant question. And one of the things we did that I would love to see us do as a city and a county, when we think about some of what I consider to be humanitarian crises in Boulder, is to focus on talking about issues, specifically homelessness and housing insecurity, much more frequently. So when we were dealing with the pandemic, we were meeting with people in the county and the city and the Boulder Chamber weekly and giving an update because it was a crisis. Our kids being out of school was a crisis, and we had to make progress quickly. But we had to do it in a safe way.
There was no like kicking it down the field to next year. I mean, it was like every week, it's like you're working hard to do what you can now.
Yes. And then we provided really, really frequent updates to the community. And we did joke a little bit. Sometimes there'd be a meeting, and we actually had really high ratings for the first time. You know, 1,000 people were listening to a school board. And you're like, wow, I didn't know that could even happen. But of course, every, every parent wanted to know how their kids could get back in school. And we had to communicate with parents frequently, even if some parents were really upset with the decisions that were made. But for us, we were just committed to keeping the communication frequent and clear during the crisis.
Well, that is a powerful way of framing what it means to handle a crisis. Because we throw that word around a lot. We say we have a housing crisis. We say we have a homelessness crisis. We say we have a climate crisis. But we're not doing weekly status reports to the community of what did we get done this week to like solve these, in some respects, existential problems. Like the climate crises, we probably should not be ignoring that. Even if we can't meaningfully reduce world CO2 consumption, we can meaningfully address fire mitigation and, you know, this sort of thing.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, and I think there's a lot of value to finding consensus with other government agencies and leaders in your area. And for us, from my perspective, homelessness is a county and even a metro regional crisis. And it needs to, I think we do need to get buy-in and think about a joint resolution across that geography saying homelessness and housing insecurity is a crisis that we need to address.
Wow. That 500 square miles number you threw out, that triggers for me, I think Netherlands is in the Boulder Valley School District. Is that right?
Yes.
And Ward and Jamestown and?
I don't, yes.
Yeah. And then how far north? I mean, is Longmont part of it? No, it's all part of St. Ray.
It goes up to Gun Barrel.
Gun Barrel, yeah.
And then out to a part of Broomfield.
Part of Broomfield.
A little bit of Gilpin County, just a little bit.
That's interesting, because I always think of Boulder as being 25 square miles, surrounded by about 70 square miles of open space. And so that's 95. So it's an area five times that size. That's amazing. So yeah, that's a lot of coordination to, to have people weighing in on this crisis that you're managing.
Yeah. And we, when I was president, and they still do this, we made sure to meet with each of the city councils at least once a year to share what our concerns are. And not everyone is aware that there's a quarterly meeting between the chancellor of CU, the mayor of Boulder, the Boulder County Commissioner, the president of the school board, the superintendent, the city manager. That's happening every quarter. And I always like to bring that up because people sometimes say, well, does this person know that this is happening? Or why, you know, and that communication is happening. So just, you know.
Well, tell us about your campaign. How's your campaign going?
Right. So campaigning for me is a unique challenge. I'm an introvert. And so I, I'm probably not even comfortable right now. But I'm better at one-on-one than in large groups.
At least, at least we're not in the small room we started off. This is a nice, comfortable space here.
Right. So, you know, you might be seeing on Instagram, many of the candidates are going to events. I personally am going to football games, which is sort of another uncomfortable place that I haven't been before. But I am one of the many people who are completely fascinated with Coach Prime and excited for the CU buffs. But, but it's hard. I'll go to an event and I'm, you know, I think the expectation is I interrupt a conversation, which I don't like to do. I don't like to interrupt people's time or thoughts. And that's not where I'm comfortable. So I was at a book reading on Thursday. A friend of a friend launched a new book, and it's kind of a cool story about the resistance in the Netherlands. And then, and I was talking about some of the challenges I had and was thankful someone introduced me to some of the women there. And she said, well, you know, there's an introvert revolution happening. And I said, wait, this is what I need to be a part of.
I like the sound of that. Tell me more.
Yeah. I was like, oh, okay. And she said, well, introverts are really good at doing things like policy or thinking really deeply and having meaningful conversations and listening. And I thought, well, maybe that is consistent with who I am. And a lot of people, when they say why they endorse me, why they want me to run, they just say, you're a really thoughtful person who's going to look at, you know, listen to a lot of different voices, spend a lot of time looking both at data, but listening to the community sentiment. And they think that's going to, she's going to represent me well. And it's very less of an ideological bent. And I got a lot of, before even the slates and the endorsements, a lot of different types of people were supporting me for those reasons. And I think part of it is being an introvert. And you, you know, if your expectation of a city council person is to make a lot of long statements, you won't be getting that from me. I did not do that on school board. I tend to be, I communicate, communicate clearly, except right now.
No, you're doing great.
But you won't hear me just going on at length. I try to keep things short. You know, I actually prefer shorter meetings, not to cut off voice.
Shorter podcast interviews, perhaps?
Shorter podcasts.
Like just a moment ago, I, we scheduled this room for 75 minutes. You were like, what?
Exactly.
Yeah. I mean, I've had some gregarious, loquacious, long-winded people on this podcast. So I just thought, you know, hey, if we keep it under an hour, you know, that's also fine. But.
Yeah. So that's sort of, so the campaign, I think it's going okay. I'm also having a search engine optimization problem that is just destroying me right now. But I think I'm seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. And then I really am enjoying meeting different people. So that's been great. We've met, I met with some mobile homeowners. And, you know, from a school board perspective, we're very aware of the different housing types in Boulder. And in a, in a very, like, in language I don't like, but we, you know, measure the yield of students per housing type across the district. So it was interesting sort of meeting people from the different housing types and.
Yeah. Yield has a kind of a loaded meaning there. But it's like, how do you come up with a word that communicates and doesn't have other meanings?
Exactly. So, and it always was kind of cringey when our incredibly talented demographer would say, no, the yield is lower. And I'm like, oh, wow. Doesn't feel right to me.
It's like corn futures in Iowa.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, cool. Well, so you brought up middle income housing earlier. And so maybe I'll just ask you an open-ended question about middle income housing and the concern that you have about bringing, you know, making space in Boulder for families. And the, you know, to, I don't know if the problem is declining enrollment, or if that's a symptom. You know, is that a problem to be solved? Or is that a symptom that suggests there's something kind of wrong in the balance of what we're doing here?
Right. And I think, I think there are a lot of things to think about. So declining enrollment isn't unique to Boulder, to the city of Boulder. I believe our enrollment is declining a little faster, especially in the elementary level. So, but you have seen declining enrollment also in Denver. Part of that's gentrification. So some families have been pushed out as areas have been redeveloped. And I really appreciate Mike Johnston's focus on thinking about not doing that more. So that isn't one of his goals. And I, and I actually, I really admire a lot of Mike Johnston's plans around housing and keeping families in Denver. But yes.
Can you put a little more detail into that? Like what, I'm not following his mayoral efforts there. So maybe if you could just give a little summary.
Yeah. So I, there, Mike Johnston, so I followed Mike Johnson for a long time. He was mostly active really in the education area as a charter school advocate, and also tried to do some pass attacks through Gary Venture. So he is looking at different housing options, and one of them is renting to own. So just thinking about that interest in being a homeowner, the advantages of homeownership, including deductions. I'm a homeowner, and I think it is, it's a good place to be. It doesn't mean people can't be renters. But thinking about, you know, Boulder is now about 53% renters. And of course, we're unique because we have the college students, right? So that's sort of a different, you have to think about that. But we just went over 50%, I think, this year. And thinking about, are we offering people ownership options in a way that might be competitive with the surrounding areas? Now, can we compete with DeKono or Brighton? No. But do we need to think about, like Mike Johnson is, are there opportunities so that people can stay here if they choose to become an owner? Perhaps as they get older, they build a little bit of wealth. So that's one way of him thinking about housing in a way that I think is creative. But for, for us, I think that what we see in the Boulder Valley School District is, I think, over half of the employees are no longer living in the district. And that's that 500 square mile district let alone the city, right?
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So that's just, and we've seen these housing increases in Lewisville and Superior, as I think everyone's aware. So, and of course, that has a ripple effect on Longmont, as, you know, some of our workers might be moving to Longmont, which is making Longmont less affordable for people who've historically been in Longmont. And just thinking about this housing as a regional issue. I didn't support the land use bill, but I did appreciate the regional focus. And just thinking about, of this as this, this region, and something like 80% of the state lives in the corridor, the urban corridor. So I think that we need to think about this idea that our essential workers, this term that came up in COVID, which are teachers, our nurses, the people who provide medical care, dental hygienists, and our police officers, what expectation do we have that some of them live in the city of Boulder? Is that important to us? Is that a value? Is it important to them? And one of the things I'm interested in doing on city council is, we had an in commuter survey. You know, the number 60,000 people in commuting is thrown out a lot. You know, first of all, we have to understand, okay, so what is that going to be a climate focus? Is that one of the priorities for, you know, addressing the climate crisis? And then the second is starting to looking at the survey for people who are coming here five days a week. So a lot of people who were surveyed in 2016 are probably now coming here two days a week. And it might be, we need, we probably need to change the conversation a little bit on who exactly wants to be here, because they're here five days a week. And we might have to make some more specific prioritizations about, we really want nurses here, to live here, because we have an aging population. They're going to require more medical services. And we also want some teachers to be here. And, you know, our enrollment's declining, but it's not gone. So there are lots of kids still here. And in fact, we're seeing some actually positive news in the secondary level. But, so I think, just thinking about what are those opportunities? What are the housing types they're looking for? And what are the ownership models that we need to be competitive with? I will never say we should build, you know, the two highest yields of housing for kids are single-family homes and mobile homes. But then second are duplex, triplex, anything that has a patio or a small backyard, something like that. So I think we can really expand that view. But then, but it's really understanding what do these people want? And, and the harder question is, is it something we need to do? And is that something I think we should be talking about as a community?
It occurs to me that you are not the first member of the District Accountability Committee to come on the podcast. A year or two ago, we had Ralph Frid.
Oh, yes. Right, Ralph. He lives in Lafayette.
Yeah. One of the, one of the reasons I reached out to him is because at one of the accountability, quarterly accountability committee meetings to the, to the board, he had, he had had a slide about the possibility of repurposing school property for housing. And I was curious if you have any appetite for that, if there's any possible, if there's any momentum behind that possibility, or if that was just kind of a throwaway, let's throw it on the board, see if it sticks, kind of idea.
So I think this is a good place for me to talk about how I approach a question. So I think the question would be, if we close schools, what do we do with properties? And I think the way to think about that, and as you know, the city of Boulder does have, and Carl Castillo will remind, Castillo will remind you of this all the time.
Who will?
Carl, the legislative person for the city.
Okay, yeah.
The city of Boulder for these school properties has, I think, the first right of refusal for the properties. So that's something he'll always, you know, when people get really excited, he'll be like, you know, just so you remember. So my question was.
That sort of thing needs to be repeated often, I assume, because people want to forget that that might be the case.
Correct. And the school district also has in its policy that they need to sell it for the highest utilization. And that might include just the highest price they can get.
I see.
So that's another thing. And theoretically, that's in the best interest of the school district. Now, you can argue that there are lots of things that are in the best interest of the school district.
Housing for their employees, for example.
Or a teen mental health outpatient, combined with an academic program, certainly something in high need in the city of Boulder. So the way I would frame a question like that is first are, let's look at the options, you know, and based on the property. So we have different types of properties. Some might lend themselves to housing. Some might lend themselves to a mental health center for teens. Some might lend themselves to temporary housing for someone who's experiencing homelessness. It could be a lot of different things. And I think if I were on city council, and this is how I approached these at school board, I always ask, well, what are the options? And now let's talk about the financial piece to it. What will give us the most benefit? I try not to come in with too focused of a solution before I clearly define the problem and that the problem, you know, with the people that are decision makers in the community.
Yeah, that's, that's a really important framing of how your thought process. Like, I tend to like get excited about specific possibilities and work backwards from that. You know, and like, my overarching goal is I want to live in a residential pedestrian district someday, so I can, you know, age in place. And when I can't walk anymore, I want to be able to roll around my neighborhood, you know. And, and so I kind of work backwards from that goal. I mean, not that, not that that's that big of a contrast to what you just said, but.
That's a pretty broad goal, too.
Yeah. Yeah. I thought, as I said it out loud, I realized it wasn't like a specific proposal on a specific property or something like that. But anyways, thank you for sharing, sharing that. Maybe, do you mind give an example of like something like that?
Yeah.
That's happened on the school board?
Yeah, I've got one. Look at that. I've got one right in my back pocket. I think it was when we talked about removing SROs from schools.
Okay.
And so removing SROs from schools might be one part.
This came, this acronym came up on the podcast recently.
Security Resource Officers.
Security Resource Officer. SRO is more commonly used on this podcast as single-room occupancy units.
Fantastic. Okay.
Anyways.
Really good clarification. So the, so we, the school board had recognized we had an issue with disproportionate discipline with kids of color. And, and that's obviously something that most school districts are trying to address. And there are different ways of doing it. And our district, first of all, changed some of its policy to support that overall goal. And then the resolution came forward to remove SROs. And the vote was just to remove them pretty much immediately. And I wasn't against removing SROs, but it was important to me to also address why, what might be the consequences of doing that? And also understanding, can we still, you know, how important are SROs to school safety, school, student, and staff safety? What are the other impacts? And how do we understand the role of SROs? And if there are things that they're doing that we need to keep, how do we make sure that those activities still happen in their absence? And so I amended that resolution to ask the district to go research that issue and come up with a plan that met both goals. In this case, it was to reduce disproportionate discipline, and also a sense of, and it's bigger than that. It's not just the discipline issue. It was the feeling of the relation, the historic relationship between police and people of color in our community, or in the nation, really. But it didn't mean for me that I would do that without a process and understanding the issue. So the district came back six or eight months later with a school safety plan. And so what they decided to do was to remove SROs, but add a new team, which are safety, student safety, something. I can't remember the term. And they would be in all of the high schools and assuming some of the assistance that the teachers needed for discipline, but in a way that was different from the old structure of security resource officers. And that's when I voted to remove SROs. And that's important to me. And I also think it was important for the community. And so there was just an update a month ago with the school board, that it's been really successful. And I think it was successful, and I'm quoting a little bit Rachel Friend, "to do things so it sticks." So if you're not aware, Denver did a really quick removal of SROs. And four months later, they put them back, because they hadn't thought about all the things that those people were doing and that were needed in their schools. And they didn't come up with a strong alternative. And so I feel like the way we approach this as a board, and I think, and all the board members, I think, would agree, is in a way that it sticks. And so that's important. And sometimes, yes, it was probably really, really frustrating that I amended the resolution and that it took more time.
Or maybe you were perceived as slowing down the process. Yeah.
And I think that's another really good thing is, sometimes when we talk about housing, or when we talk about anything.
Homelessness, yeah.
Yeah, homelessness. Some things look like you're slowing the process intentionally to not get there. And one of the most difficult things is, is Tina slowing the process because she doesn't want to remove SROs? Or is she authentically trying to remove them in a thoughtful way so it sticks?
Yeah.
I like to obviously think that I'm the latter. But you'll see that even with housing. Like was saying, when I said I don't want to do increased occupancy, because I want to maintain some housing stock for people with children, which still would maybe result in four to five people per home. So the net number of humans would change, whether it was five college students or two adults and three children, same number of people. Was I trying just to be against, you know, communal living? Am I anti-something? Or am I authentically looking to create middle housing opportunities for families? Again, it's the latter, but it may be perceived differently. And I think it's always, you know, with any elected leader, are they slowing down something that they just don't ever want? Or are they slowing it down to create something that they truly value? And I think that's a good thing to, and it's pretty hard to get at, but I think that that's something that we see in leadership. So.
Interesting. Yeah, there's a, it seems like, you know, if, if things feel stalled, we blame analysis paralysis. And then we talk about how everyone in Boulder has an opinion. Everyone has a PhD in economics or a public policy, you know, like, or thinks, thinks they have the equivalent in life experience, you know. And, yeah, it can, it can be very tricky and heated, right? Like, I think, you know, I got into politics through the bedrooms are for people initiative. So I campaigned for that. And it was, you know, it was a super interesting exercise for me in learning how to, even how the city works, how different people's point of views work. And the angle you just gave about five unrelated adults versus a kind of a nuclear family, I actually haven't heard anyone frame it that way. You know, just the way you put it. And the thing that I sort of retort is I think about, like, you know, west of, west of Broadway, whenever I'm up in these hills and I look down over the city, I'm kind of, I was amazed by how much land is west of Broadway. Because I kind of think of it as, in my brain, of what's possible for me and where I might live. It's sort of off limits, you know, it's so expensive. But it, but it's a huge amount of land. And I picture it as being full of large houses that have one or two people in them. And a lot of those houses, I can imagine two families living in them, you know, or, or two families in some, some borders, you know, like, you know, if you have a, if you have a 5,000 square foot house, that's, that's room for a lot of people, you know. So the, when I think of that area of town, trying to imagine putting five people in there in some way that would be affordable to some demographic that we're trying to serve, doesn't seem all that likely. But, you know, I, I just throw that out as a, as kind of like what I heard when you said that.
Yeah, no. And I think it's just different thoughts. I mean, so, and I think it's why it was a controversial initiative. So, I mean, bedrooms is actually pretty different than the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
And I, and I do recognize that. So I had, I interviewed Terry Burntich recently.
And I, I think you're a plan endorsed candidate. Yeah, right. So I asked her about ways that she might be open to making her neighborhood more inclusive and more affordable and more populated, honestly. And she seemed really open to upzoning and affordable housing in her neighborhood. And I'm curious if, if this is a posture or attitude that you shared?
Yeah. And I, I feel like a lot of people have moved there. I don't, I mean, I've been here for 21 years. And I do feel that there is a lot more openness in general to the idea of duplexes and triplexes in single-family neighborhoods. I think there is a concern just because of the development of townhomes that are selling for a million dollars, is what are we going to get? for a million dollars, is what are we going to get in terms of some kind of affordability? And, you know, for me, this is totally pie in the sky. And full disclosure, I am not a developer. I'm not even close to it. I have never, you know, and so I, but I think about like, well, what if there was a way where the city could help two people turn a home into a duplex? What if they gave them huge incentives, like waiving a permitting fee and waiving, you know, like waiving a lot of requirements so that you could create and then, and have it owner-led, so that maybe there's less markups on the property? I'm not dissing developers, but is there a way to create a more affordable pathway to convert an existing property into a duplex?
Interesting.
And I think that would be of interest. I think, you know, taking a big lot and then building a new, two small homes or a duplex brand-new is going to be still really expensive. Just, and so-
You have to start off by owning the thing, you know?
Exactly. So, yeah, and it's, and that's like that whole land trust idea, which I had been familiar with, you know, for a long time. But now I'm really starting to understand the value of that a little bit more. And I know that there was this legislation that didn't pass this year down at the Capitol that might have given cities a first right of refusal for certain properties, I think, then to, to create. I think that's what it was, but I, I apologize if I'm misspeaking, but.
Well, we've talked about community land trusts a lot on the podcast. David Adamson was one of the original co-hosts of the, of, in season one of the, of, this is our third year of doing it. And, yeah, we should, we should, I need to get David back on the podcast and talk about, remind everybody about the, the value and the possibility around putting land trust together as a, as a, as a tool in the toolbox for addressing affordability.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I still don't totally understand it, but I've spoken to David many times, you know? And so it's just sort of, again, just being creative.
Do you live near him by chance?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Okay. Well, that's interesting. One of the daydreams I have is with expanded occupancy, and I haven't read through the, the ordinance that's passed. I want to read through it in detail and understand the nitty gritties of it. But the possibility of co-buying a large house with another family or with some other adults and figure out how to divide it so that my family could live in one part of it, or in the basement, or an ADU in the back, and then a, a co-op or, or roommates in the, in the main house, you know, something along those lines. I'm really interested personally in exploring those kinds of possibilities because I really don't want to like, spend the next 20 years and all this life force into accumulating a down payment and stretching myself thin and thinking about how to make payments for 30 years. Like, I have other things I want to do with my life besides add that kind of stress and financial precarity to, to my situation. So like, I'm really interested in figuring out ways to buy, you know, have market rate affordability that's creative and works for me, you know?
But you're still talking about an ownership opportunity.
In this case, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's an ownership opportunity.
Right, so I mean, yeah.
I, I have been a renter for a long time, and I've actually sort of started coming out as a renter, you know, like identifying as one. Which is, which is kind of a funny thing, because I've always viewed politics and my future through the lens of it being a future homeowner. And, because that's kind of where we see, you know, security as being, right? Like, if you're a homeowner, then you have that security of knowing you have a place and that the prices won't go up or down. I don't know, to me, it seems like 53% of the city shouldn't be perpetually insecure when it comes to renting, right? Like, like, I feel like we could, we could structure society in a ways where, where we all feel secure in our space.
Yeah, I mean, and just this idea of, you know, one of the articles, I'm sure everyone read it, was about the affordable housing in Vienna, Austria. And the part I really liked about it is-
The social housings.
Yeah, the social housing, yeah. What I liked about it is that when your income started growing, you weren't kicked out immediately out of your housing option. And we have a system that I think sometimes isn't gracious for life's ups and downs, you know? You're sort of a medical emergency away from not being able to pay your rent, or, you know?
Yeah.
And this idea that it's okay for people to, to live comfortably, but it was, I thought it was a neat concept that seemed to provide people housing security. And it didn't, I think sometimes there's a concern that people are taking advantage of the system or don't deserve it, or, you know? And I don't think any of the people in that example were becoming millionaires through living in social housing. Like, I, I don't think that was the case, so.
Well, what's, what's, what's a subject that you want people to know more about you as they consider voting for you?
Yeah, I guess I'll talk a little bit about community engagement.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, tell us about community, what's your philosophy around community engagement?
Yeah, and I think people talk about community engagement a lot, and they talked about it a lot on school board. And so there are lots of ways that, you know, I, I think there's really broad recognition that we need to be listening to voices that don't get heard from a lot. People who don't feel empowered to speak. And coming up with systems to do that, while also understanding that at the end of the day, your governing board is going to make a vote. And this is this balance that's, that can be really hard, especially if you find out that you don't support whatever this small group is. I mean, that can be really difficult. But one of the things, I'll just share this story. I, I play mahjong, and I was playing mahjong with some friends. And we were upset, I have, you know, we have teenagers. And so, you know, we, we weren't loving that they were going on these cruiser rides and, and seemingly getting into a lot of trouble. And so we started talking, we said, you know, wouldn't it be great if we put up a bunch of volleyball nets? Because I noticed at this party, the kids really like volleyball, and, and got a DJ at North Boulder Park and let the kids have the park, but it'd be a little more controlled. And one of the moms says, yeah, I mean, this is really great. We have four 50-year-old women who are sitting here coming up with what the teens want to do on a Saturday night. And it was a really good reminder of, yeah, a bunch of 50-year-old-
Here's some party hats, kids.
Right, exactly. You know, we'll have pizza, and we'll have a gluten-free option, it's going to be, they're going to love us, right? So, said no 17-year-old ever. And so that was just, that's a different way of saying, like, why it's so important to ask people, what are they looking for in a meaningful way? Meeting them where they are, whether it's linguistic, whether it's geographic. And, and then making sure that that gets back in a way, ideally, like, I, I like storytelling, but sometimes it's anecdotal. To also try and get engagement that's meaningful from just a sheer numbers. So it's easy to tell one compelling story, but you need to be careful about whether that's really representative of a population. I'm very attuned to that.
I was in a meeting recently where the results of a Be Heard Boulder survey were, was part of the narrative. And it's like, you cannot say enough that it's not a, it's not a statistically valid survey. It's like, you can't repeat that basic premise of what, what the value of Be Heard Boulder survey gives, because people just see the numbers and they're like, oh, people think this, or people think that, you know? And it's, so it's a really tricky.
Yeah, and Be Heard is really tricky, because it's a really good idea.
Yeah.
Because it, it's engagement from your home. And I remember going to meetings where they would, you know, put out the site plans for Alpine Balsam, or I just went to the airport, open house, whatever that was. And that's hard for people to do, you know? Honestly, at the airport, you couldn't take public transportation to that particular area, and parking was really hard. And, you know, so that, it was a great, it was a great presentation, though. It was a, it was a good event, I thought. But that is hard for people to do, so I appreciate sort of this different-
You mean, the actual, the actual event was hard to get to?
Yeah, yeah. It was way out east by the, you know, where they park the buses for the school district. So this idea that we go out to different communities and, and all that is great, but I do think we just need to be careful and-
Yeah, there's, there's an issue around, you know, we were talking about process before and how careful process can feel like, you know, stalling or, or just, you know, perpetual punting. And there's a, there's a kind of a, an adjacent theme that I was, I interviewed Dan Williams yesterday about homeless services coordination. And, you know, one of, one of the themes that came up with that is that, like, we have a lot of experts in the city that really have understanding of how solutions can work. And so to kind of pivot from taking their expertise to like, going to like, full-on community engagement, how do you feel about homeless, how do you feel? And it's like, the, these, I'm not saying these voices don't matter, but like, we're not all experts in how to solve this very complicated problem. We actually have a bunch of experts who know how to solve this complicated problem. And so like, to give them more voice or give them, you know, like, it's a very tricky balance, I believe, to-
Yeah, I think there's a parallel, I feel, a little bit sometimes with climate, actually. Because I, all the candidates got to meet with the city staff, which was great. And I, and I actually, my one piece of feedback would be, I wish they could have the experience we had offered before you declared your candidacy, so that you had a deeper understanding of what's already being worked on effectively. And also that, you know, the school district now has this Leadership Institute that invites community members to get a lot deeper understanding of what the different departments are doing, what the goals are, what the strategies are to reach those goals and how they're measuring it. And I, I would love for the city to think about doing that, too. I think it would help the overall perception of inactivity or disinterest quite a bit. It would be, I, I think it'd be valuable. But with climate, they, they are a team that has funding that I think is doing really good work. And I would trust-
I'm sorry, who is the team?
The Climate Initiative team.
Okay. And through the city?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, they seem like they're doing a great job and being really-
Is that like an advisory board or a commission?
No, no, these are employees.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a department.
All right.
And so they're working on flood and fire.
Okay, great.
So, and it, it seems like, you know, they're, they're talking about the things that we're talking anecdotally about. Like, is juniper trees the big problem? Like, they made a joke about that, it was kind of funny. But wooden fencing, I mean, they are talking about it, and it was really great to hear. So you're right, there are experts. I do think it gets trickier, and this is really true in education, you know, we've seen experts also be trendy. So-
Totally.
So in education, I have to admit, I come, yes, they're experts, but they're experts who definitely say different things. And so that is where you make the hard choices and why you should, you know, when you're looking at your elected leaders, well, which expert are they going to listen to? Because it's not, you know, there's not always consensus around issues, you know? And we really saw that during the pandemic, too. And-
When people say that they're data people, I, I appreciate that, and I want to be data-driven. And I also want to be in lots of conversations with lots of other people who have tried different, you know, other cities and regions and be, you know, reading about what works and what doesn't. But something that, you know, kind of gets under my skin is when you say, we're going to be scientific about this, you know? Because it's like, city politics is messy and it's not science. It's like, it's more like medicine, you know? It's like, it's, it's a practice, it's an art, and it's also science to some extent, but it's not really like, you know, plugging the numbers and here comes out the, here comes out what you need for policy.
So, yeah, I agree. I mean, and so I, you know, you can find a research or a dataset, I think, for anything at this point.
Yeah.
And the internet's made it even richer, so.
Well, thank you for spending time with me today on this podcast. I do want to give you one more opportunity for a parting shot or anything else that you might want to say that, that you haven't come around to?
Yeah, no, I'll just close by thanking you for, you know, inviting me to speak. And I really am committed to Boulder, having lived here for 21 years, and trying to balance, you know, the needs, like what we love about Boulder, why I moved here. We feel like it's, it's frustrating to try to solve the problems that our communities facing around climate, housing, homelessness. And I'm hoping that what I'm hearing on this campaign from a lot of different people are the same things on both sides. What I'm hearing is that people really, really care about people who are suffering right now. Whether you're a progressive with a capital P, or whether you're on Plan Boulder, I don't see the level of caring to be any different.
Yeah.
There is so much compassion. And I feel that people want people who work here to be able to live here. The challenge is how, and I'm not sure it's a one-size-fits-all. I think we're going to have to look at a lot of different things. But what I'm finding is that it's our commonality, and it's so pithy, but it probably will be our strength. And I think that we have spent an extraordinary amount of time pushing each other apart who basically have the same values and the same love of people and humanity. And I do, you know, this is getting a little Aaron Nyer, but Aaron-
I love Aaron.
Aaron said the most beautiful thing at the Plan Boulder Forum. I mean, he is an inspiration, just the way he said, gosh, we all care so much, so why are we getting so up in each other's, you know, business? And why are we being so polarized? And, and one of my answers to the polarize, I said, because all the media groups or the, all the groups keep asking yes or no questions. And as long as we ask yes and no questions, it's as if we are working hard and fast to polarize. And if we decide there is no nuance and there is no complexity, then we are feeding into that polarization every time we do that. So, so I hope we move away from that. I know we love our scorecards, everyone's making one right now, and I really admire all the people who are engaged. But when we do that, we also end conversations, and I don't think that's going to help our community move forward.
Yeah, I've heard people say that talk is cheap, and I always push back. I, I say it's the most precious thing we have, and, and we need a lot more of it. So I, I know what they mean, but you know, like, being in dialogue is, there's, there's no substitute for it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's part of the goal of the podcast, is to give you a chance to, you know, speak with nuance and, and more than just the, the clips. So really appreciate you taking time and being part of this.
Yeah, thank you.
Gonna find me a residential pedestrian district where I can gracefully grow older. Gonna spend my remaining years sharing Boulder. Thank you for listening to Sharing Boulder. Please support the podcast by sharing it with your friends and neighbors. You can contact me at linktree/philipogren, which you can find by visiting sharingboulder.us, where you can also find show notes and previous episodes. This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by Philip Ogren and edited by Katie Avery. The music was created by Nathaniel Ogren and Sac Lunch. Keep sharing, Boulder.